All right, it is the March twenty-sixth, hopefully final budget meeting two thousand twenty-five. Please stand for the fudge allegiance. Fudge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America. Senator Crawford will stand. One nation under our invisible liberty and justice law. Thank you. Tim, you want to kick it off?
Sure.
Uh, roll call, sorry, one second.
Mayor Dorrell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Buckland?
Here.
Trustee Mossen?
Here.
Trustee Sochi?
Here.
All right, thank you, Tim.
Okay, so this is, as the mayor said, this is our gap up here, hopefully to mail the news into the next public hearing in two weeks. So we can try and close on agreement on all the budgets we've done so far. So, um, let's start with water and sewer. Please have separate fees for water and sewer?
Water and sewer are separate funds, so yes, there's separate.
Okay, good.
Last two pages, I believe.
All right, good. This package at Nicole Gate. Let's start with the water, that's the E one. Recall, we ever closed the budget. Uh, expected revenues, given the expenses that Scott provided for us, by assuming a five dollar per meter quarter recharge increase. So instead of twenty dollars per quarter per meter, that will go to twenty-five dollars per quarter per meter. You've got additional revenue that allows us to close the expected expenses against the projected revenues. So that budget, to my mind, is closed. Any questions about that? Okay, that's, you know, don't get me wrong, but going to sewer. Now sewer, we were very close last time. Um, we were assuming a fifteen percent increase in both the rate for thousand gallons, as well as an increase in the special benefit assessment, the SBA. As you can call it, the SBA is a separate line item on the, uh, ta- the village taxes. Every taxpayer that have their copy tax, we also have an SBA line. That's there. So that's a separate charge, and we're gonna increase both that and the rate for thousand gallons by fifteen percent. Okay. Um, we came close when we did that. Uh, we'd asked Scott to go back and scrub, and I think he did go back and reduce his, uh, planned, what was it, repair and maintenance, or was it the capital?
Uh, repairs, yeah.
Okay, fine. Uh, but as you go on down here, you can see the bottom, the, uh, still shows that we're short in, um, revenue by thirty-one eighty, all right? We have a new item to discuss. And that's the following, relates to the Bennett pump station. So we had said at the meeting last, last time, that we were going to take out a ten-year bond to cover the expected thousand, a hundred thousand dollar remaining expense to pay off the South Millbrook pump station. Two issues, one on this, legal told us, because when we took the ban out, it has to be paid off by twenty-twenty-eight. Okay, so we can't take a ten-year bond out. That's the bad news. The good news is, instead of a hundred thousand dollars needed to pay off the remaining expense, it's sixty-one thousand. Okay, turned out that we had paid some of the bills a few years before, and so what we paid currently totaled three hundred eleven thousand dollars for the entire project to be completed. And we got two hundred fifty thousand, we're getting two hundred fifty thousand back from DASD, New York State, for the grant provided to us by Michelle Hinchey and Dee Barrett. So there's another sixty-one thousand dollars that we as village residents have to pay off. So what we plan to do is get a three-year bond, and Sarah, did you get any feedback for the bank yet?
None, I haven't.
We expect them to come back and say about three percent interest for a three-year bond. That'd be twenty thousand a year in principal and about two thousand a year in interest. So call it twenty-two thousand, all right? And typically what we do is we would then figure out what the rate increase is across the board. However, the mayor has a different proposal, can you describe that? I'll get you to the shoe and the piece there.
The Bennett pump, the Bennett pump station, um, after we discussed with Scott, is it's not just used by village, um, sewer users, but it's also used by users in the town. I believe the percentage for the village is forty-seven percent, or a percent?
Oh, I support forty-seven percent of the users are outside the village, based on Scott's data.
I have, uh, the village is at fifty-seven percent.
Fifty-seven, okay, fine. Or forty-three, fifty-seven?
Yeah, well, that's without those eight lots off Maple Hill, so.
Actually, I think we should count those eight lots.
I think we should too.
Yeah.
Then the village is at fifty-two percent.
Right, okay. Okay, I support, okay, fine.
So, we're proposing that we increase the SBA so that the users outside of the village pay their proportionate amount to pay for this pump station over the next three years. So they will have a fifty percent increase?
Hundred percent. Their, their SBA will go up a hundred percent.
Hundred percent increase. It's a large increase, but it shouldn't just be borne by, um, everyone in the village, because everyone in the village doesn't use the Bennett pump station. We don't, you don't, um. So those people in South Millbrook use it, and, uh, some village users use it as well. So we're proposing to increase the SBA a hundred percent for three years, and then it will come back down.
For those users outside?
For those users outside the village.
So currently, Sarah, uh, receives about ten thousand dollars per year from town residents for SBA. And so that number will go up to twenty thousand with that change. And that will leave us with a need to fund eleven thousand, call it twelve thousand, within the village. All right? That twelve thousand is basically covered by what we assumed from last time. For example. For the ten-year bond. Is that where they're on that? Oh, there it is. Okay, the last, last numbers you can see is fourteen thousand, two eighty-five for principal and four thousand for interest. So we've already budgeted eighteen thousand. That's it, okay, yeah. We've already budgeted eighteen thousand, what the mayor's proposing is, for the twenty-two thousand, we're gonna have to pay off for the three-year bond, the village residents will pay twelve thousand, those outside will pay ten thousand. Okay, so we'll up the SBA for those outside to twenty thousand, that covers ten. And then we'll use, of that budgeted eighteen thousand, we'll use twelve thousand for the, uh, village portion. And that'll give us enough to cover the thirty-eight hundred that we're still short in the bottom line, okay? So Sarah, how should we show those numbers, just to get them done? Zero out here.
Just add the thirty-one eighty. Or, or take it away from the expense or to the.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't you add revenue of ten thousand for SBA, right?
This one? Not this one? Yeah.
So an extra ten?
Yeah, so.
What would be the town, though?
So twenty-one? You wanna raise it to twenty?
Yeah, oh, actually, I'm gonna raise it, raise it by ten.
It shouldn't be the next line, though, like, is that plan?
Yeah, it should be the town, SBA.
Oh, this is a new line yet. It's, this now is this.
All right.
Eleven thousand looks like the number that we had from last year. So that number we want to change too, is if it's eleven thousand, now we're gonna make it one thousand.
All right, so twenty-one thousand or twenty-one five?
Whatever, yeah, twenty-one five, yeah, add ten thousand.
Tim, what are, and what, what's the interest rate we're assuming with this?
Three percent. So on sixty thousand, it'd be two thousand dollars a year. All right?
Is that the rate we were originally given on a ten-year? Is that why we're using that?
Yeah, I think so, that's roughly.
It sounds like three and a quarter, yeah.
Right, three and a quarter.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, three percent is eighteen hundred dollars, okay, so three and a quarters, two thousand. That's in the ballpark.
Yeah.
I don't know. All right, so that goes up by ten thousand, and then what we can do is, um, decrement the amount expected from the Bennett pump station to, uh, twelve thousand. I'm assuming I'm making a principal of, uh, twenty, no, no, principal, minimum. Principal twenty.
Yeah, twenty.
And interest of two.
So for this, these two lines, twenty-two?
Yeah.
It's back to where we were.
Um, so what does that show now, positive?
Yeah, three-one.
Yes, right, that's good, that's right. So let's put that thirty-one hundred back in, into the reserve.
In here? Where?
Add it to the five.
Add it to the five thousand?
Yeah.
So eighty-one oh five?
So it shows out, so revenue people expenses for the sewer, based on it. All right? That's a good plan.
Yep.
And, um, that's how we solve that problem. Any questions about that? All right? So we're finished with Scott, right?
Yeah.
All right.
Hey, God, I talked to Vince, you can't leave.
That's right.
All right, now let's talk about Dave. So for that, uh, Dave, each of the, um, trustees, this two, like the three pages. So, if you remember, the A fund, last week's meeting, we told up the total, the, uh, A fund expense request, and the clerks have done an assessment of other revenue, right? The, um, total expenses, like, two point six million. The clerk said the other revenue is about one point three million. So, one point three million and two point six, the tax level we needed was one point three million. And given that last year, uh, current year, our tax level was one point one million, one point three over one point one one is an eight percent debt increase, remember that? Okay. So, we've done a lot, a lot of work over the last week, and basically we've met with each of the department heads that are participating in the A fund. And the tables at the top just shows you the changes, first column is the current budget, twenty-four, twenty-five, and the second column is the requested twenty-five, twenty-six. And this is after we scrubbed the numbers. Now on the right, you can see the dollar increase from last year to requested this year, and the percent increase, all right? Um, we'll go through the details in a few minutes, but just go to the, to the, the solid line there. Total A fund expense was two point six million, now it's down to two point five six. It's a three hundred twenty thousand dollar increase here every year, or a fourteen percent increase, all right? So we did some work to reduce the expenses, I'll show you some of the details in the cover charts. And then other revenue, we also worked on improving that, and brought it up to about sixty thousand. And so therefore, that's gone up to twenty, uh, almost over a quarter million dollars, or twenty percent. So if you take the total expense, two point five six, minus the other revenue, one point three six, necessary tax level is now one point two million. It's down about a hundred thousand from our discussion last Wednesday. And so the, um, one point two million divided by one point one million is eight percent increase. All right, so we've brought it down from eighteen percent to eight percent. It's better, it's not gonna explode the tax cap. That's a significant improvement. And by the way, um, the clerks identified what the tax cap is, and we're gonna make budget and be under the state's mandated, mandated tax cap. You have to cut out an additional sixty thousand, you have to go from one point two million down to one point one four. All right? And based on this, the clerks have been preparing for the possibility of succeeding the tax cap, which is something to vote on at the public hearing in two weeks. All right? That's how that would work. Any questions about the totals?
I have one question. I know at some point, probably a week ago, we were talking about the fire and rescue increase, which is obviously a
Dramatic.
Dramatic and a big part of this. And somebody floated the idea that our Millbrook EMS could maybe take up some of the responsibility for emergency services, and then we were gonna reach out to, what's the ND?
NDP.
NDP, and see if they would be willing to do some kind of, of, you know, sort of shared responsibility kind of deal.
The way we're looking, and Tom, you can jump in.
Yeah.
Is, we're not gonna ever close such a plan if we now, and
Okay.
We, we
That's, that's not happening this year, yeah.
Right.
Right, okay, so that, that would be something for next year.
For a follow-on.
Possibly.
Okay.
We have to wait and see, um, because we got all the new numbers, A.
Right.
How many of them stick around, B, how many are able to pass the E M T?
Right, okay, so that's a, that is a, it's still, it's still on, okay, it's still kind of on the table, it's just not something that we can
The person I'm very leery about that, just given all the, what else is associated with that.
Moving parts, right, I get that.
But we should, we should do the exercise anyway.
Yep.
All right? All right, so, turn over the next page. So the first question, which you'll all be prepared to answer when you're queried by residents, is, why did the A fund expense go up three hundred twenty thousand from last year to this year? It's not tabling the, the key hitters associated with that three hundred twenty thousand dollar increase. The biggest, biggest ones we all know is the hundred seventy-five thousand dollar increase in the NDP contract, all right? Far and away, that is a big shoeshock. Next, we had twenty-seven thousand dollars of salary increases in the current plan. Now that's twenty, twenty thousand down to three percent, plus the chief, as we've asked him to do, is to do better as far as police coverage, it does additional things regard, regarding coverage on weekends or on holidays when, when their full-time officer has PTO. All right? So it's a little bit more than three, three percent, but that's the total salary increase we're showing in the current plan. Uh, village employee medical insurance went twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, the fire department wanted a new brush kid unit, twenty-three thousand. I combined the increases in state retirement, low SAP, and liability insurance, that's eighteen thousand. Uh, the fire department equipment for new volunteer, Don Boxey dot, this turnout Gary needs, additional fifteen thousand. The, uh, the police and the highway have done, I think, a smart thing, which is they put significant numbers in for vehicle repair and maintenance that we had not had before, that totals fifteen thousand. Um, Ethan's asked for initial fifteen thousand to cover expected increases in salt and calcium chloride. We added a new, um, contractor, Justin, for one day a week, that's fifteen thousand. And the fire department had to get a new contract for their nine-on-one notification system, that's ten thousand. There's a lot of miscellaneous puts and takes, but those are the key hitters about why the numbers went up three hundred twenty thousand, which is an off the, off the charts kind of a number.
Yeah.
So I just think you need to know that, those things, so you can speak coherently with people asking questions. Any questions about that?
Well, everything that's on here for the fire department and the, the red MX, is that our, the village's portion?
No, that's the total.
That's the total.
And so is the three hundred twenty thousand. All right? So, yeah, I didn't take the, the back.
Oh, so it does come on with that?
Yeah, that's off, that's off the total, all right? And so I'm sorry? Eighty-two point six percent.
Is this, would this be the total there, Tim, or no?
What are you pointing at?
That's the bottom here. So if this was the approved fire contract, and this was all that, the difference would be the seventy-four?
For fire, yeah.
For fire.
What, what, what difference?
Between revenues and, and expenses for fire. So what the town pays is?
Oh, yeah, right, the village just paid about seventy thousand, that's right, yes.
That's, that's, that's what it's right.
That's right. Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Now I'm gonna go to the third chart.
We don't.
Oh, yeah, this, this is one of my, my, my teaching, I gave to the trustee.
You didn't make one for Sarah.
No, I'm right, I'm sorry. You can move over to Peter's shoulder, he's got one. All right, so the third chart describes what we did since last week to jack up the revenues and to reduce the expenses. So revenues, we had forty thousand dollars because the town is making monthly payments to us starting June first through December first of this year to cover the increase in the NDP contract, that starts six one, okay? And actually, their payments are gonna be eighty-four thousand dollars. And so what was decided was that we would book half of it this year and half of it next year. All right, to help us smooth the transition, because by the way, next year, the NDP contract goes up another hundred thousand dollars. All right? So half of what they're gonna be paying us this year, this county year, is forty-two thousand dollars.
And just to hit that home for, for everybody, next year's budget is also gonna be extremely, um, involve a lot of work, it's involved, so.
Unless that just kind of can figure something else out. Something, something's gonna have to give soon. Yeah, I think this is crazy. The six hundred thousand that we're paying, we're getting off late compared to, they're, they're doing, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand a year, and they're only doing twelve-hour days. So.
Standard, that's the same thing, it's just pervasive, we actually have the best, best of the overall.
Yeah.
Stands to say. All right, we also look to increase the expected revenue for the tax account by five thousand. Um, increase additional revenue from inspections, five thousand, and a slight increase in the expected water tower rental. So all those things together is how we got this additional fifty thousand revenue. All right?
For, for, um, can you just explain, so you had mentioned about the town of Washington starting the payments towards the NDP contract, and you said you decided on taking half of that for, um, it's just not
First off, for the record, I can decide that, others, I
No, I don't, I don't mean that, you know what I'm saying?
I wouldn't take it off. I wouldn't know.
The work that's been done the past week, but it was a good idea to explain what you mean by half of it. Is it off with the fiscal year or the village, is that what's
So, in our fiscal year, starting June first of twenty twenty-five,
Right.
we'll be taking forty-two thousand.
Right.
The money paid to us by the town between June first and December first of this year.
Okay.
All right? And put it into our budget.
Yes.
The other forty-two thousand, we're gonna put off to the side, it's fun balance, which will come into play next budget.
Okay.
All right? That's the idea.
Okay. Thank you.
And as Peter just said, it's basically to kind of modify
Right.
the expected increases next year.
If we took it all this year, yes, the percentage increase would be less.
Yeah.
But next year's would be huge.
Right.
So we're trying to spread it out a little bit.
Right.
So, um, hopefully we can come up with maybe some additional sources of revenue.
For next fiscal year.
For next, next budget.
My calendar.
All right, so, this shows the revenue about fifty thousand, reduction of expenses about sixty thousand. Basically, this was by sitting down with how many guys in Police Department Office in one of three things, either find ways to move in purchases to the current fiscal year, where, for example, the chief was estimating to be thirty thousand dollars to the good on salary by the end of this budget. So he proposed moving in some of his expenses into this budget year and using that expected extra money to cover it. Um, eliminate or reduce some of the rest expenses, just going through some good things with both the chief and, and highway, um, and some front office choices as well. And we're possible using grants as the chief has identified, or chips as Ethan identified. By doing all those things, basically taking out of the expense portion of the budget, it still gets the things that these guys said they needed, all right? So that told him about sixty thousand dollars, so that tells you, oh, we got the whole thing down from a one point three to a one point two, you know? Okay. Any questions about that? All right, so now we get to the point, we're trying to resolve outstanding issues we have. Um, so I've got a list here, which has gotten outdated, I'll walk you through that. So the first thing is to talk about the number that I had used for the fire rescue um, has gone down. I'm not sure why it changed. I think it was something to do with the capital expenses.
Where are we looking?
That, Matt, on, on fire.
Firehouse, rescues, retaining wall?
No, the retaining wall's still in there, right, Tom?
The cameras?
You took the cameras in?
Yeah, the cameras were coming out. Instead of doing the elaborate system through a company, we're gonna just go to the home depot
Okay.
and build it yourself type kit.
All right, and is retaining wall still ten thousand?
Yes, um, one of the things we're talking about is now removing that wall. Uh, Peter came here. Yeah, kind of leveled that area out, where we no longer need a retaining wall, which would make Ethan travel a little easier, then he could push the snow off the bank instead of up against a retaining.
Yeah, okay, all right.
And it would give us a secondary parking spot there.
So is ten thousand still a good number?
Yes, because there would still be removal of the wall, digging out the existing dirt, putting down bays, and then blackopping it, so dirt's not running into the streets.
All right, so, i- if you total up the, the, um, expenses for the, uh, the firehouse, the farm attic, and EMS, I get a number of nine-eight-three-nine-twenty-three. Is that what you got?
Yeah.
Okay, good. So what we do to figure out how much money the town is gonna pay us is we multiply that times eighty-two point six percent. All right, 'cause that's their portion. And that's eight hundred twelve thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars. And we add to that, what happens is the money, the, the contract we set, the budget we set for fire rescue covers our fiscal year, June first of twenty twenty-five to May thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. It's also used to, um, cover the budget of the town of Washington from January first of twenty twenty-six to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. So the way we do it is, we look at what the budget is for fire rescue. We assume that the cost of fire rescue from June first of twenty twenty-six to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six is the same as it is in June first of twenty twenty-five, December thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, with the kicker of the known increase in the NDP contract. All right, does that make sense? Okay? Um, so the adder for the NDP contract is going up a hundred thousand dollars, starting June first of twenty twenty-six. So for those seven months, we take seven twelfths of eighty-two point six percent, of a hundred thousand dollars, and that comes out to be forty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars. We add that forty-eight, one eighty-three to the eight, twelve, seven, twenty, that gives you a amount due from the town of eight sixty, comma, nine zero three.
So that's different than this?
That's different.
So what is it?
Eight sixty.
You're adding the forty-two in.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll, and add the forty-two, thank you. We're gonna finish, finish that forty-two. So the number is nine oh two, comma, nine oh three.
Nine oh two, nine oh three?
Yes.
Okay. So then the difference is this?
All right, so just, just the contribution from the village, yeah. So that's gonna be a short thing to talk about, when we get to resolving all the expenses. We're gonna be short, six thousand dollars basically. Okay? Let's go on to the detail of the, um, the budgets. So first off, police, police equipment. And please, chief, please jump in here, but the story is, we have, um, when the mayor and I met with the chief, he had in the budget, uh, ten thousand eight hundred dollars. He said he was gonna move into this year, half the body armor and ha, and the guns, seventy-two hundred dollars, and he was gonna go with a grant to cover the other half of the body armor, thirty-six hundred.
That's right.
So based on that, we can zero out police equipment. Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay. So you go back to your master sheet. Police equipment.
Oh, you want, hold on.
Police equipment. So it's thirty-six hundred? And that should be zero.
Yes, I know.
All right, chief?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's just one of about seventeen thousand dollars of reductions that the chief identified. Or reductions or, um, deferrals, whatever. Okay, so appreciate all the effort there. Um, on my list, I next was asking whether the four thousand dollars for the tennis court reserve was gonna be in there or not, it's not in there. And mayor said that if you're gonna put the money in for this year's budget, put that zero for next year. So what's, what's on the master sheet is correct. Okay? Um, Ethan has an issue with road paving. So can we go to, um, roads?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one, ten?
Do you want the detail or the master?
Oh, let's go to the detail, that's good.
So streets?
Streets is nineteen.
Around nineteen. Two?
Equipment, what are you looking for?
Hold on.
Streets paving. Streets paving.
Fifty one oh two oh seven. On my master thing that we that you just printed me out today, it says forty five hundred and I don't, I can't have that drop below five thousand dollars. I thought we were gonna take the two thousand dollars that we took from trees and take a thousand dollars and add it to the five thousand that was already there.
We put the two thousand in trees and put it somewhere else.
No, we didn't. We were gonna put it in there.
I thought we took four thousand in trees.
No, we took the two, there was a two and then we put the two somewhere else.
The two, cuz I remember we were supposed to, the money was supposed to go back in that blacktop line.
That's what I recall.
So, cuz we put, this is the blacktop I added was two thousand dollars.
That was, that was supposed to be from.
Was that the two thousand we took from the other line? That's trees. Okay, so then.
From the trees, yeah.
So we're adding an additional thousand, you said?
Yeah, so instead of.
Five hundred?
So it should be, it should be.
Should add five hundred to what you have now, you give it five thousand.
Yeah.
Is what he's asked.
That's fine. So that line's gonna go back to.
So that's the road paving line, right? Fifty one on, fifty one one oh two?
Oh seven.
Oh seven, right. That goes to five thousand, Ethan?
Yeah, well, I thought, then we were just talking, it was supposed to go to six cuz it was supposed to be five, but then we're gonna take a thousand, one of the. The two thousand we cut from trees, may only make it a thousand and make it six thousand.
Okay, I mean, it's, I can explain that again. I got the five thousand, I did the six.
We just talked about it two minutes like before we walked in.
Yeah, right. So just.
But we took the two thousand from trees, right? The original budget was five thousand.
Trees was twenty three, right?
I'm talking about blacktop, but.
Right, I'm saying you took it from trees, so.
Yeah, we just seen we cut. Yeah, we we've cut.
We took the two thousand from trees.
From trees, yep.
Yep.
I wanted to take a thousand of that, uh from that and add it to the five thousand original blacktops, it would be six thousand.
Great, so we took originally two thousand from tree trimming and two thousand for cut and remove, we took the four thousand.
Yeah. Yep.
So then we put two thousand of that into, into here.
Two thousand, back up there and. Yep, I didn't know, I don't know how it dropped from the tentative to, from five thousand to forty five hundred.
Yeah, those are the numbers that. So where's the extra? He said there's an extra thousand.
I wanted to take half of the two thousand that we cut from one of the lines and put a thousand of it in there, so it's total of six thousand for that line.
So then this would be fifteen.
That works.
So none of that was coming from the chip stuff, is that, I thought that was part of the move?
No.
I don't know, I just know what was written down.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I got too, that's fine.
Okay, so then that one.
So the only thing is, he wants that.
I can't, I don't know if I can use. Chips for patchwork like that for drag box, it's not a tenure plan.
So the point is, you're gonna do more blacktop work yourself this year?
I wanna do more patchwork, yeah, myself, yeah, that was, that's why I wanted to double it to begin with.
So that, that, in my mind, that's something that could be cut if we find we can't make it, but that's somebody's request, we should put it back to six thousand. Which is what he's requesting to see what happens.
I'm burnt out. And then what was cut from that equipment and supplies and street seeds? Forty three hundred fifty four dollars.
Um it was a thousand twenty, it wasn't besides, it was something else.
Where were you at, streets?
Fifty one one oh four nineteen.
The curbs from paint.
Yeah, cuz we're gonna do it this year, right?
Paint the curbs?
Yeah, this this year, is that what we're gonna do?
I thought we, I thought we went, went to buy the paint this year.
We usually don't do it.
Was the idea.
We always buy the paint.
No, no, early, like by, with this.
With this, with this year's money, you want me to buy it?
People are just sort.
Right.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know, we didn't discuss it before.
Yeah. That was, that was an idea.
I, yeah, yeah, I, I thought we settled on it, I don't know.
Okay.
But I don't, we have, we have a tarot, he just first time, I don't know about it.
I don't know.
But yeah, I can, I can go buy the paint now, that's no big deal.
Yes. So what does that do to the numbers that are on the chart now? Does that change anything?
Wouldn't. Which the.
It's the, it, we already took it out.
It's already zeroed, yeah, okay, fine.
Oh yeah, that, that was already taken out, cuz those are the numbers that I was given from Sunday.
Those are. Alright. That was an idea, we hadn't booked that yet, but fine. You're okay with that?
That's, that's fine, alright.
And you're okay with uh getting a concrete planer this year?
Yep, I just requested two quotes today, so.
Which is what he'd uh decided to take out? Are there any other changes that uh? Need to be discussed, chief or? Front office, any else there?
You want to talk about the skid, uh the brush?
Yeah, the brush skid unit, well, the only other thing there is.
Bonding it?
Dom's, Dom wants to buy it, he's.
Well, I, I have something on that, um. We no longer need to purchase the whole new unit, um I've been able to finally find a pump and motor only, which will save us about ten grand on that.
Oh, really?
So.
Okay.
I found the pump and motor for about nine thousand and then we, I'd like to keep twelve thousand for that budget, just for additional parts. Needed to.
So instead of twenty three, you went twelve?
Yeah, I can.
That's brushing correct.
We'll take it.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
Yep.
Where, where am I putting this?
Alright, so go to the um.
Would there be a paving expense on the retaining wall if he could do it?
Well, what I was gonna talk to him about is try to get that prepped, so when, cuz I think you're planning to do Washington Avenue this year, right?
Yep, yeah.
To be able to go, hey, we'll pay for the extra two or three tons, however much more of blacktop. Now chip in on that and while they have the paper there, have them hit that spot. That's the open grace. Two parking spots.
Oh, so you want to cut towards the architects a little bit or the other?
No, downhill. Yeah, if there's that little retaining wall there, cut that out, level that off, that's why there's no more retaining wall.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Uh this is, it's in the farm attic. I think I.
What, I, I'm trying to do other numbers, so what am I looking for?
Farm attic?
Yep.
Um.
Brush kid unit.
The twenty three thousand. You just had.
Twelve, or twelve.
What are you saying, if you can change that to what?
Twelve.
Twelve.
If I could, if I could keep twelve out of the twenty three, that would.
Okay.
Pretty good for us and still good for project.
That's good.
So forty two, two fifty.
And by the way, it's gonna change the calculation for the amount of revenue for the town. Let's wait till we do all this first.
Yeah, that's what we figured instead of replacing the wall that you guys have to keep ramming into.
That's a drop of eleven thousand, wasn't it?
No, well, somewhat.
Take a fix to that, okay, Don's after two minutes.
That was Bob last year, okay?
Yeah. Well, that was falling apart as it was.
So you want the toll for fire?
Yes.
Okay. So I have for expenses um. Nine, nine hundred seventy two thousand, nine hundred twenty three?
Right. So I'm gonna give you the new number for the um revenue. I'll take that nine seventy two. Nine twenty three times eight two six. I'm gonna add forty. Oh, brush, first I add the forty eight, one eighty three. And then the forty two thousand.
And are you thinking for Washington Avenue, like, leap somewhere or?
Alright, so Nicole.
Yep.
The revenues from the town of Washington.
Yep.
Is now eight ninety three. Eight one seven.
Just cuz we gotta wait until the June first.
Yeah, I'm, I love to wait until, for my chips.
Also, when we reduce to eleven thousand, so we lose.
Yeah, there's not.
Seven, nine thousand, ten thousand, okay.
That's one square feet house, like.
Yeah.
Cuz I want, where was Washington?
Eight ninety three.
Is it straight through there?
Eight ninety three, eight.
Eight one seven. Okay, so can we, can we total roll up? What's the total revenue versus uh expense for the A fund?
About where it was.
Alright, so the appropriation is two point five four three.
It's actually up by two thousand, twenty four hundred dollars.
And the revenue is one point three four. So the amount to be raised is one point two oh two.
Yes, yeah, it went up.
Okay. And one point two oh two. Round about one point one one. Is an eight percent, eight point three percent increase. In the tax way.
Does that work, man?
Yeah.
Huh?
Does that work?
What do you mean?
How did the amount to be raised?
Oh, because the revenue went down.
Oh, yeah. That's awesome.
Yeah, what happens is.
The fair contract, revenue went way down.
Right.
Couldn't figure out that either, I'm waiting.
So what I calculated before was like one, was it eight percent, now it's eight point three, but. Rounded to say eight percent. Now, Peter, we talked about, I'd like to be able to book some revenue for the trailer. What, what do you think the value of that trailer is? Any offhand? The old trailer that kept, keeps the camera? Sewer camera?
Say probably six, eight grand.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
You see?
No?
It's in good shape.
Yeah, it's in there.
Okay, fine.
No.
What do you think?
In good shape, yeah. I made a brand new enclosed trailer right now, it's going for almost fourteen, fifteen. Might be a six.
We should put a conservative number in there. I think we should put something, though. What's a conservative number?
Tonight, we need it.
No.
It's coming next week.
Next week, okay, fine. So let's plan on putting a number in there.
Don't give me time to look at it.
Yeah, and also um Taylor's gonna come from.
That's from me?
Yeah, okay, yeah. Okay, yeah, get a number from him.
I bet, I bet she'll use six for that trailer.
Well, let's book it.
Yeah.
Say we got something.
Yeah.
Anything else we could be doing? As you all look through this detail, anything that uh bothers you?
So putting something in for sale of equipment?
Safe.
Are we putting, are we gonna put a number in or are we?
Not now, yeah, once uh Taylor comes from A R X, we're gonna, we're gonna get a number out of him.
Alright.
And we should do the conservative number.
Chief, any word regarding the um insurance?
Those will think it's gonna go through?
Yeah.
Yeah, it does, it looks good. It looks good. It has to go before the town of Kipsey Town Board for approval for the sale of the vehicle. And then once that, all the numbers have gone over to the insurance company, it looks like it's gonna be a, of a costless transfer for the village.
Okay. Wow. Does everybody know that story enough?
No.
Why don't you, you tell them, chief?
Sure. Uh so we have a twenty sixteen Ford Explorer that's outlived its, its purpose for the department. Um we're ready to, to move on and. Um. Replace it with the twenty twenty three Charger, but fortunately, I guess. Uh it was involved in a motor vehicle accident and the insurance is giving cover for the cost of the replacement vehicle. Which in this case, uh we, we located a twenty nineteen Ford Taurus. That the insurance company with forty eight thousand miles, the insurance company will do it even swap. Looks like, it's not guaranteed, but it looks positive. So it's a thirteen, thirteen thousand dollar vehicle. And the replacement cost, uh or the uh repair for the twenty sixteen Ford Explorer was like seventy four hundred. So it's, it's really a huge gain for the village.
Ah, okay.
Is that the third vehicle that you were talking about a couple minutes ago?
Yes. Yeah.
How many miles are they?
Forty eight thousand.
This forty eight thousand has a police car?
Has a police car, yeah.
That's a good miles, that's a good mile.
But it's, right now it's in the shop, getting a water pump and they're doing a complete once over. To make sure that when we get it into replacement condition. It's in the hatch if it's covered in.
You need a backup truck. No, I know, I need a backup.
This year we started.
You just have to dig out.
Alright, so Peter, we're looking at an eight point three percent tax levy increase. We're gonna exceed the tax cap. And so the board has to approve as part of the review and.
It's by local law.
By local law, right? And so, so you started the work, the paperwork required to.
It's in the paper, already.
Part of the paper, okay.
Yeah, it's in the paper.
Right before last week, there's no way that we're gonna exceed it, so.
Write a letter to your senator.
I'm sorry?
Write a letter to your senator.
Yeah, right.
Tell him to get this ambulance stuff squared away.
Well, that's, that's a big piece of it, alright. So any other ideas that people've got? Of things we could look at for additional revenue or additional cost reductions?
And I know this is frustrating for, for first timers especially, um so there's, if there's any questions, comments, um issues. Adjustments, you know, now is the time where we can, we can make that.
And even feedback from constituents, right? If you ask questions and you have a hard time wrestling with it, you know, bring it forward to the board.
Right. And obviously the public's invited to the public hearing on the ninth, but by then it's, it's a lot less, you know, we don't have much flexibility at that point.
Yeah, so the reason why we're gonna get the uh, the budget approved by the ninth of April is because the clerks know have to start a lot of work with the county. To prepare the tax bills that get sent out, so all the work can be done between then and June first. So uh time is of the essence.
My paid one, I'm suing those taxes.
I'm sorry?
Unpaid one.
Well, my paid one is soon, that's right, yeah. And um Scott's not here. But I think, I think V R I needs to have some kind of official notification, Dawn, so she knows what to do to the bills, talking about the next billing period. Both for the S P A, not the S P A, just the water rates and the sewer rates. And actually, when we improve, when we increase the rate for those outside the village, she did ask, ask for a letter to put into the, in the bill that she sends out. So they knew, knew about that increase. So Dawn should get notification when we do it.
And that's as of?
It'll be the first bill after June first, whenever that is. Is it July?
It's cute, right?
Okay, okay.
She's coming up there.
Yeah.
Don't mess up, okay? Don't, don't, don't throw salt in the road, okay?
Yeah, really. It's a cutoff point.
If they raise.
Regard it.
If they do a, if they raise the rate that's not on the quarter.
What do you mean?
Like you said, right after June first to raise the rate, let the bills go out.
July, right?
For, for June thirtieth, right?
Yeah, the, the, the rate begin, or effective with the next bill you have. Right?
Okay, not, count, not, taking into account the whole.
No, no, no.
Quarter, just the very next one.
So the bill goes out in July, it's for April, May and June?
Right.
But effectively, April, we, we started a higher rate.
Okay.
Alright.
Yep.
Okay? So the July bill shows. So the July bill shows water spent for April, May, and June and the higher rate for sewer is effective April, May, and June.
Okay.
Right?
So wait a couple days?
So like the bills are, so the bills are gonna go out like next week?
No, no.
No.
For the bill that goes out in July.
July.
Oh.
It, it, it calculates water usage, April, May, and June. Right? So I'm saying that's where the rate increase is going on. So it's for the bill you pay in July, but for usage.
Effectively, it's starting.
And then.
That's the retroactive pay you're being.
Well, I guess. That's the way we've done the revenue assessment, so we've got to do it.
Correct.
Good question. So is there anything else to discuss, um? I think what we do is we put it on ice, have it available for anybody to look at. You know, chew on.
I, I'm also, um I sent an email to uh building and planning departments today about expectations for revenue.
Good.
Going forward too, so hopefully gonna sit down with them in the next, uh, you know, in the coming days.
Alright.
Um, to hopefully squeeze some money in there, but nothing we can book.
Sure.
Nothing we can book now, obviously.
We just updated the rates for building permits, right?
Twenty-four.
Yeah. Twenty-four, okay. Did that include rates for reissuing permits that have expired? It did, okay, good. Alright, fine.
It seems like the town has a system where they're notified when a building permit expires, so it's an easier way to keep track, um or maybe there's some software out there that might be helpful, so we'll look into that.
Alright, great, good idea. Alright, um, that's all we really had to cover tonight, unless there's something else to discuss.
Do you wanna talk about alleyways and everything else that we were talking about tonight?
So for the budget, by the way, so Peter, we don't need a beating next Wednesday, thanks for this, right? You're right?
I don't think so.
Yeah, well, something surprising comes up for the time being, I'm gonna be sure.
Please, no, no more surprises, please.
No, there's no guarantees.
For new trustees, any questions? At this point? While we have everybody here.
I just wanna say thanks to Nicole for all the work she did on this budget.
Yeah, makes it a lot easier. Whatever, can I mention it was, it was like.
Pencil and paper?
Yeah. Okay. Alright. Need pizza?
Yeah, um, make a motion to load the media.
Second?
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Let's go, Saul.
Would you like?